I'm curious about it. Usually, what did it mean? Because like I said before, but I could never make it down. They had told me the most what I was like, yeah, I'd never heard of it. They had said usually the city manager said, I don't know, because I can't bring anything back. It's like this was like, I mean, like I said, I said on that, but I never ever heard.
I was curious about it.
Because like I said before, but I could never make it down. Because they had told me the most what I was like, yeah, I'd never heard of it. They had said usually the city manager said, I don't know, because I can't bring anything back. It's like, this is what he was reading. I mean, like I said, I said on that, but I never ever heard.
I was curious about it.
At 7:00 PM, call an order here at the regular meeting of the City Council of the City Rents Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, December 5th, 2016, 7:00 PM. All rise for the invocation, please.
Laura, we'd like to give you thanks for the many blessings you bestowed upon us here in Rents Pass. We ask you to watch over the ones that don't feel so good. We ask you to watch over the ones that have passed on the last couple of weeks. We ask you to give street to their families as they go through sorrows each day, wonder what's going on. We ask you to bless our community with our kids that are future leaders that come and go. As the time has come, we want them to stay here and build a community forum. We ask you to watch over all our people and our guests as they come through our doors, sometimes with the full heart, sometimes with the empty heart. We ask you to come with the peace in their heart. We ask this all in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item 4-1, it's our San Patricia County Economic Development Board of Directors. So have you already served on this three years, Greg?
Yes, Mayor, it's an automatic type of appointment. This is something that I inherited when I came in. Your prior managers also served on that board.
Is it only city managers or does council?
No, there are council appointments, there are members of the community, there are city managers, Rosemary sits on the board, chambers of commerce. It's all anybody who has an interest in the local government and can be appointed by the local government.
What's the procedure still be accepted or considered?
As with any other board, we have to open up the application process, accept applications, take a nomination, and then vote as a board.
This year, this is the final time to do it for to reappoint you or can we accept anybody or sit you later?
The term ends January 1st, I'm sure we could put something out or if the council so chooses to appoint one of its own members to the board, they can also do that as well.
I would be interested to at least put an application up, maybe serve on this board.
Your council members have to suggest you and then you guys take a vote.
Okay, so we don't fill out the application online first or?
No, the letter says your board makes an appointment. So we have not opened it up to the public, we've not opened it up to any of the other boards and commissions. We can do that if you so desire or actually if the council desires.
Yeah, that'd probably be wise. It's up to the council.
I make a motion that we appoint our city manager Sylvia Carrio to the economic development for San Patricia.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
And of course I oppose.
This is going to bring us to item five, the consent agenda. All the final items of the consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item 5-1, approval of the minutes of November 21st, 2016.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, you're up, item seven.
Mayor, the first item is the request for the Rentsis Pass Chamber of Commerce to utilize the Shrimpery grounds and also police protection in the amount of $25,000 to $28,000. This is the same type of request from last year. Basically, what it is, is the item is worked into the department budget. The chamber then reimburses the AP PD for cost of police protection. Rosemary is here with any questions.
Any questions from council?
Mayor, let me say that the agenda says June 11th, 2016, that clearly is a typo from 2017.
All right, good job. But corrections. Rosemary, is there anything you want to add or?
No, just wanted to reiterate the Shrimpery is always the second weekend. So it's June 9th, 2011, the cargo starting on Thursday. And it's normal procedure, we do the letter so that we can start promoting. We do have some really good entertainment, but I'm not at liberty to say because I haven't signed contracts yet. But it's coming, I was just waiting for you guys to approve it.
Okay. Motion for approval for that item?
I make a motion, we approve the request by the chamber with corrections on the date.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
The next item is a request for the council to consider an act on a shoe drive. Normally, well, it has been the last three years, we receive a grant from HEB to assist with not only our Thanksgiving meal, but we've had residual funds that we use to pay toward the indigent children in the area and their families. It's not just the child, we give to the immediate family as long as everybody is a student in AP ISD. And we have an 18-year-old cutoff limit. This year, we have had a need expressed on the part of our seniors. So we've reached out to the senior center to take a number of how many seniors would be directly impacted, both served by the AP Housing Authority and then our shut-ins that we provide normal meals to through the police departments rounds. So we have about 100 seniors who would be served possibly if we were to fund both programs. Funding both programs would be about $5,000, $2,500 for the children and $2,500 for the seniors. And we typically partner with Payless and we do something during their BOGO, their buy one get one sale. They're not having a BOGO sale this year, but there is a 30% coupon that may allow us to use. So we're in the process of trying to work something out with Payless. So I don't have a date certain, I'm awaiting the council to make a determination.
This fund that we're getting it from, which one is it, Sylvia?
It's discretionary.
Where do we start out, at the beginning of the year?
$50,000.
Do we have enough to cover it right now?
Yes.
Well, I make a motion that we cover, provide for the children and for the seniors.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from this one because my mom lives at the housing authority. I don't want the confusion that she's getting something that she shouldn't get. So that's my reason for it. But it's a very good program and I'm glad those councils do this, because it needs to be done for our citizens.
The next item is a consider an act on the city holiday. The employee handbook has the staff being off on January the 2nd. So we're requesting either to cancel the first meeting in January or move it to the following week, which would make a January 9th council meeting.
And then will we have one the next?
Yes, so you would have one the 9th and the 16th.
I'll make a motion, we cancel the January 2nd meeting and then have one on the 9th.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Excuse me, Mayor, Alan, can I go back and reopen one of the agenda items that we voted for? I totally forgot that I needed to abstain from the chamber since Rudy, my husband, serves on the board. The one for the chamber, the funding, for the police protection? If we can, can I go back and reopen that or change my vote to abstaining?
I think you just change your vote.
Okay, abstain for the record.
Number 7-4.
Well, the first item is the dollar that the council members earn for their year of service, October 15th to October 2016. So at this point, I have a dollar for Mayor Chapa, council member Ellis, council member Abrego, council member Hyatt, and also council member Scruggs. So please don't spend your dollar all in the same place.
Don't break the glass.
So, just because I've given you a dollar doesn't mean I'm on the take either.
Okay, okay.
Check the one more.
Thank you for your service.
It is often a thankless job.
The next item is the, I wanted to give council an update on the employee Christmas party. It is going to be held on Monday. We are providing, and it is going to be during the day at the civic center. We are providing some door prizes and some of the main courses, staff is bringing potluck. It's a potluck type party and there are prizes for best side and best dessert. So that's going to be Monday from 11:00 to 2:00. Some of the city offices will have skeleton crews and some will be closed altogether to allow the employees to participate.
And that's the 13th?
We'll have plenty of notice posted out at the city offices.
I'll bring this to 12-1. Chuck going to handle this one.
Mayor and council, we continue to make some improvements down at the Harbor Park. And I come before you tonight to recommend some changes to the ordinances that rule the, or control the public's use of the park. I think this was in your package. Our vandalism has. Our vandalism has really fallen off in the last year since I've spent time down there. We still see an occasional problem, but it's, with the lights on now, the people that are causing problems don't like being lit up, and they're going somewhere else. I have no clue where they're going, but we see very little of that at the park now. But we do have some problems down there. Speeding through the park is a problem, particularly when it's crowded on weekends. We'll occasionally get somebody wanting to run through there at thirty, forty miles an hour. The police responded to a call from me the other day from some, a couple of young gentlemen cutting doughnuts out in the parking lot. Just foolishness like that. Most people are quite respectful, and we don't have any problems with them. But I am recommending that we establish a speed limit in the park, which will enable us to take control of those kids. Another problem that has come up is the fishermen that are using cast nets on the fishing pier. If there's only three or four people on the pier, it's not a problem, but when you get a weekend and the weather's nice and you got fifteen, sixteen, eighteen people on that pier, and then somebody wants to throw a cast net, and they're always the ones that have to spin around three times like a dervish to throw it. And of course, it spooks the bait. They catch very little bait because the water's too deep. And when the bait run away, the fish that are eating the bait run away, and all the other fishermen are irritated at them. So I want to eliminate cast nets on the fishing pier. They can throw cast nets from the bulkhead. We have also seen several instances where people have multiple fishing poles on the pier, as many as six poles for one gentleman. And of course, he's, they're spread out, and they're put in holes on the top boards of the safety rail. And so he's got about a third of the pier reserved for his six poles, and people are wandering around. You know, it's a problem. We need to eliminate that, and limit the poles to two per person, I think would be acceptable.
Chuck, how would you police that, though?
I'm sorry?
How would you be able to police that?
I'm down there every night, down there at every night, and just tell them they can't do it. I have found if I approach people and tell them, this is against the rules, you're not permitted to do this, ninety-nine point nine percent of them say, yes, sir, and they quit doing it. Occasionally, if somebody wants to argue about it, I've got the PD on the radio, and they're real quick to get there and give us a hand. Finally, we have had a few unattended minor children, young kids, on the pier, which is fine. I love kids fishing, but I don't like them climbing up on the safety rails, standing up there to cast and leaning over. Somebody's going to get hurt. So the last page of your handout would be how the rules would read. I'm proposing the purchase and installation of three signs, and I've given you a map where the signs would be. And this is incorporating existing prohibitions in chapter nineteen point five of the city code and adding what's necessary to encompass these four areas I've spoken about. Speed limit, ten miles an hour. No camping in the park, that's already in the rules, as is no open fires, no containers, glass containers, no littering. Animals must be leased at all times. Parking allowed only in designated areas. And if this is approved, then we're going to get busy doing some striping down there and designate some spots.
I was going to say, what about the overflow in time? People park?
Yeah, we have an overflow area to the north side of the parking lot, and they're welcome to park up there. And they do. Of course, no swimming is allowed, no cast nets on the fishing pier, no more than two fishing rods, and none, no unattended children under the age of thirteen on the pier. This would necessitate an amendment to chapter nineteen point five. The city attorney has indicated if the council desires these changes, he will write the ordinance and bring it back so he can submit it for approval.
Just have a question, Chuck. What if some poor brave soul wanted to be out there like tonight, or it's really not that cold yet, but on a night like this, and there's nobody else out there but him?
We have no problem.
You wouldn't run him off because he had more than two poles?
No, the park is open twenty-four, seven.
Right, but you're saying limit to two poles. What if he's the only one out there on a dreary, cold night?
Then he gets limited to two poles.
Yep, you just have to be willing up to give up those other spots.
There's nobody else out there.
Double leaders.
There you go.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I don't know how to answer you properly, Ms. Scruggs.
But the right answer is two poles.
I gave the right answer. Okay, I'm not going to be hard-nosed about it, just to irritate people. If there's not a problem, I've got other areas I can be concerned about.
Right, okay.
But rules are rules. Other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
If everything passes, this deal, how long, pre-warning newspaper, or, you know, before anybody just says, hey?
I would plan, mayor, to put it on our city's website, under the harbor, and purchase the signs, and once they're installed, probably just give warnings to people for thirty days before we start writing citations.
Right now, at this point, all we're seeking is council direction on which one of these rules you're okay with and which ones you're not. After you give direction, then we will proceed with crafting an ordinance that will have yet another public hearing.
Anything else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Chuck.
What's the favor of the council, item twelve, one? I make a motion, we approve item twelve, one.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
This is going to bring us to item thirteen, our citizen comments. We have seven twenty-one. Floor's now open. Everybody would like to come up and comment before this council?
They'll tell me to shut up after five minutes. If you're here with me, I'll start this. My name is Harry Boyd. I live at three-three-seven South Commercial Street. I have other properties between here and Rockport, but that's my main one. I came here today to speak to you from the standpoint of a couple of things. As a citizen, I want to say thank you. I love this place. I'm a cancer survivor, and I made a very difficult decision a few years back from my beautiful home in Bernie, that I had saltwater bubbling up through my veins, and I just needed to come back. And then later on, I realized that psychotics are drawn to large bodies of water. So, mayor, council, city manager, chief, thank you very much. I've had an opportunity to really get to know a whole bunch of people in this, in this city. And I've got to tell you, I've been treated absolutely wonderfully by every single person. And having a hard-headed stubborn seventeen-year-old, I've also had an opportunity to meet other aspects of our community. You know, he slept through most of his garbage, I guess. I don't know. I love this place. I came here because I wanted a simple place. I'm a South Texas boy. I was brought up, I had spent a little bit of time in Corpus. I have had the luck to be a photographer and travel the country, and a lot of beautiful places. I've lived in wonderful places. I've been a photographer for the month, Texas Monthly, and my second career was education. And I've had just a wonderful, I mean, a wonderful life. And I chose this place because I just love it, and I love you guys, I really do. But mostly, I was choosing between Corpus, Portland, Ingleside, and Rockport. And I met Sylvia and Jen from the Rialto, and they're the best salespeople you can imagine. And the next day, I bought a building for a hundred and something, and I'm now at about a half a million. And I'm going to close my wallet. Here's the downside. Look, I've never sat there at all. I never have, but I've stood here a lot. And I have, I was very active at Durango, Colorado. You could Google. I believe in the resources that we have. I'm the guy in the silver car with the little dog who photographs with big lenses, the wetlands. Some wonderful people have come alongside of me. I don't have the energy I used to, but his son, for one of them, has helped me to, you know, to bring about a dream, which is a coffee shop, an art center, and a galler. I'm going to stop all of it, and I'll tell you why. Look, guys, governance is really, really sticky and messy stuff, and my hat's off to everybody, the mayor, all of you, and Sylvia. This is hard business, but I'm going to talk to you as an investor. As an investor, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to look at social media, and I'm going to read things, and I did that today. Done there all month. And I need to apologize because I bought those smart pills that you buy, you know, and take them, and you get smarter, and you don't lose things, and you know exactly what you're saying. And I lost the damn bottle. So speaking from my heart, I'm not going to completely shut down, but I need to see, I need to see consistency in governance. I think that citizens need to be treated right. I think mayors need to be treated right, and I think city managers need to be treated right. And I have worked and lived in communities where city managers weren't half what she is. And I don't care, you know, you're going, you're going, things are going to happen. And when they do, I think you need to do it behind closed doors. I'm an investor. I love it. I'm going to stay here. I'm going to go photograph, all that other stuff. And I'm not a big guy, and I'm not a rich guy. I'm nobody. That is my retirement. I've been digging in my pocket for four years, or three years, right, two years, two and a half, three, almost three, trying to create something down here. Okay? And I need to see consistency in government. I really do. I need to see that you guys can work it out, and there's some places that have patacas for the weekend, and you can lock yourselves up and go at it. And I understand that. I really think that everybody's got valuable points of view. But if there's somebody with millions of dollars that's looking at that harbor, I can tell you, I can tell you right now that they probably backed off. You know, you guys are wonderful. This is a wonderful community. Those wetlands are unbelievable. Every single citizen that I've met, every single person that I've worked with in this city, has been absolutely phenomenal, and especially her. She shows up at my, at our group meetings that we have, she, things are starting to really happen. I feel safer. This community is cleaner. There's a lot of wonderful stuff going on, and you guys deserve to have some of the, some of that, but so does she. I'm going to end with this. My brother and I trade stocks. It's a sideline a little bit. And some of the best bargains I've ever had in my life is when there's been votes of no confidence. Because what happens is, is the stock of the company plummets. Sometimes it comes back, sometimes it don't. Please, work it out. I love this place. I really do. I want to be an asset to this community. And I'm sure everybody's made mistakes, but I'm here because of her. And a lot of things are happening because of you and her. And I want to see it go forward, but I'm going to take a break. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I feel the same way that the gentleman says.
What's your name and address, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mariana Sotomota. I live at four-four-three North Whitney Street. I'm a retired professional. I do a lot of volunteer work. Two of the things I've done, you know, for Orenzis Pass in and around is historical marker for the BFW across the street, and the other one is for segregated, abandoned, and victimized cemetery, that all the deeds, which are about seven, read, "To Latino Americanos, our Orenzis Pass, Texas." The only one I couldn't find a deed to is a plat that the county did in nineteen oh six for the Latino Americanos, our Orenzis Pass. So this is segregated intentionally. The graves are, they vandalized their, I had, I put up my job to put a historical marker there, I have to plat it. It had never been platted. I asked the local mortician for help, he didn't even bother to respond. So I got going. I counted one grave at a time, and some were signs of burials there, makeshift, signs that you could tell there was a soul there or a body there. And I counted over four hundred graves, and then out of the four hundred, there was a hundred and ten graves that had no names. But some of those graves have been, other people have been buried onto them, they swiped the markers off, and it's just outrageous what's being done. Because those people there that are buried now are my relatives. I've been here since the turn of the century, you know, Orenzis Pass, from Florisville, by San Antonio, as part of Canary Islanders that established Texas. I'm a Tejana. And so I stand here before y'all. Hopefully, y'all consider to take it under the fold, to help us, to watch over it, and if it needs to be, bring the Historical Society out here to check and see how many graves indeed are underneath the burials now. I have my great-grandfather, I remember, Vicente Longoria, Mungia Longoria. We took him by horse wagon, horse and buggy, to the burial place. This man would take people to vote. He was very patriotic. And so sometime back, Mayor St. Clair declared San Antonio Cemetery Day, since then we found out that we need to correct it because it is Latino Americano Cemetery for the citizens of Orenzis Pass. Some of the groups that had taken over are actually literally stealing, and they don't know what they're stealing because that place has burials there already. Back in the day, the city, the county used to...
Ms. Carrina, do you have the paperwork?
I've got a lot of paper trail. Every word I spoke has a paper trail on it, including the latitude and longitude of the graves. You can go, and there is one. I had the Knights of Columbus helping with this. And so what I'm trying to do is get other people interested in, and it's a thankless job when you take on to be a volunteer, as I've done in this city, because I love it. I was born and raised here. My great-grandfather came over here when my grandma was a teenager. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll follow it up with the paperwork. I need y'all's help.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steven Warren, six-seventeen North Houston. A couple of things. I had, there was a house on North Houston Street, six hundred block, that was slated for demolition back about a month and a half, almost two months ago. This afternoon, there was an SUV that was backed up to the house, and somebody's taking the wood off the broken windows, and they're inside there. And I figured the house was, you know, condemned, that's why we were demolishing it. And I'm not sure why somebody's in there now. It still hasn't been demolished.
There was a house demolished down the street from me, and same thing, Sylvia, I don't know if you're aware of it or not. I was talking with Robert, that I noticed that the tin roof was removed. I didn't know if we had contracted that out, or...
No.
One day it was roofed, next day some was laying sideways, some was gone.
No.
So I don't know if somebody's...
Are they taking it for scrap, or are they?
Well, they told the neighbor next door that they worked with the city, had permission from the city to take what they wanted. So I don't know if something Eric can look at.
Yeah, this guy was in an SUV that was backed up to the house, so I don't know what, I could hear some pounding and stuff inside, but I don't know what was going on.
Yeah, because I thought usually we put it for demo, we just, until we get to it, we tear it down.
Yeah, they're slated with the D for demolition. Nobody should be on site other than the property owner. The property owner still has access to the site, but we don't have anybody who is just partying out pieces of houses.
Yeah, so I don't know what's going on with that one.
And this is at which one?
It's in the six hundred block of North Houston.
Roy, will you follow up?
Across, Cattycoin across from my house. And then Pryor Street. I don't know why that road just got tore up to be repaved. There was nothing... There was nothing absolutely wrong with that road. They just came in and just completely skinned it to repave it. And I know we got some roads around this city that have potholes that probably need to be fixed. That's not one of them. That was the biggest waste of money that this city has spent out since I've been here. It was ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Yes, sir. Mr. Marquez?
Hey, my name's Liz Crowley. I live at 902 South Amont. And this is not gonna be easy for me, because I'm not a confrontational type person, and that's not what I come here for. But since the mayor has announced his vote of no confidence in the city manager, I feel necessary to come forward, not only for myself, but for other citizens that don't have the nerve to come forward. I no longer have a business in town. I no longer am in fear of that business being closed down, because I have closed it myself. I'm here to address you, the council, and the mayor, to, and I wrote this down, so I wouldn't miss anything, so I am going to read it all. But this is from me. To establish my concerns in opposition of the city manager. You, the council, have said how Aransas Pass has moved forward and away from the good old boy system under the administration of our current city manager. I beg to differ with you on that. It is my opinion, as well as others in the community that I have talked with, that it all depends on who you know, and if you're in the right clique, as to whether or not you yourself can accomplish anything in this city. I believe my concerns are warranted, considering my past experiences with the council and its administration. I honestly believe the city manager has proposed and pushed for items that were intentionally meant to retaliate against me. Although the city manager may not agree with this, I feel very strongly about this. First of all, concerning an attempt to get a rezoning to establish an upscale RV park. The council approved the rezoning on a night that Ms. Correa was out sick. She was then contacted via cellphone, put on speakerphone, and she asked the council to table the item until she could come up with conditions that RV parks would need to adhere to. Did not have a problem with that. We could have adhered to anything that they, the council could have come with, because we knew what we wanted to do with this RV park. Without notice, we were put back on the agenda on a date when Ms. Scruggs, who had publicly announced her approval of the park, happened to be out of the country. Coincidence, maybe. A new vote in favor was taken and failed, although disappointed the decision was accepted. I have never had a conversation with Ms. Correa outside these council chambers. It is my opinion that if I had gone to her beforehand, asked permission, things would have gone differently. Again, that is just my opinion, but I believe you all know what I'm talking about. After this, it is my opinion that my business was targeted for retaliation, and retaliation for what, I will never know. I've never had crosswords with Ms. Correa at all. I've never spoken a word to her outside of these walls. My mother and I were specifically named as hecklers, liars, and haters in an email interview with AP Progress. I have that interview right here, if y'all would like to take a look at it. She stated that I consider competition to my business as bad. How she would know what I think is beyond me. I have no clue. Actually, I see competition as a good thing. It can only make you wanna be better at what you do. I have never wished a business not to succeed, even if it competes with mine. But she did, however, go to a local business owner with a concern that she had heard that I wanted to burn their business down. I asked a particular business owner to get with the three of us together, so I could figure out where the rumors started. After talking with this business owner for quite some time, she conceded that, yes, I indeed am not the type of person that would have made a threat like that. To this day, I do not know where Ms. Correa would have gotten her info, or why she saw fit to pass on what could only be construed as a rumor. This email interview that I have here, between the city manager and the council, where she thanked the council for untying her hands to give her the opportunity to air concerns that fearmongers had been able to feed, and air people as liars. You, the council members, have allowed and made it okay for her to call the citizens of Aransas Pass these names. She was given full permission to speak without filter, her words, not mine, about anyone she perceived to as being haters, liars, and fearmongers. This, in my opinion, shows a true lack of professionalism and a lack of ethical restraint on the part of the city manager. I have heard several times that the citizens need to get involved and attend the council meetings and let their voices be heard. As long as you, the council, allow the city manager to roll her eyes, make snide remarks, belittle and demean people that come to this podium, because I've seen it with my own eyes. It happens. You're never gonna get the citizens involved. Never. It's not gonna happen. I know of several business owners that are in opposition to the city manager's will, but you won't see them here, because their business is what puts food on their table and a roof over their heads. They fear retaliation from this administration, and that is the sad truth in the state this city is in. We need a council that will do their own due diligence and research in matters that come before the council, and not rely solely on what is presented to you. I believe she's very knowledgeable, and she knows some stuff she doesn't know at all. That's what the citizens elect you for, for you to research, you to find out, you to figure out, find out, is it really truly good for this city or not? Or is it good for just one group in the city, one individual in the city, one developer in the city, one anything in the city? But is it good for the city as a whole? That's why we hi, we elect y'all. Y'all need to remember that you're elected by the people, all of us, sitting out here. And I have even seen her make snide remarks to you people on there, roll her eyes to you people there. You may not have, but believe me, the people in the audience see it. For these reasons, I'm asking the council to correct this most unethical and unprofessional circumstance you have created. No person should ever be subjected to the lies and hatred the city manager is able to reject. No business should ever have to worry about retaliation, because they oppose a city official, more importantly, the city manager. You, the city council, should never let their employee, a person in a position of public trust, ever engage in acts of defamation and acts that could be construed as retaliation. It's my opinion that the city manager conducts herself in the most unprofessional and unethical manner, which has compromised any trust I or others in the community have in her abilities to conduct herself accordingly. At this point, I formally state my lack of confidence in the city manager, and ask him to counsel to consider and act to terminate Sylvia Correa as the city manager of Aransas Pass. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Marquez?
My name's Jerry Marquez. I live in Johnson Road in Aransas. I'm talking to you about my pet project, which is a veterans memorial park. I've been involved with our park from day one, and it sucks, to be honest with you. The other day, Veterans, Veterans Day, we found two more broken bricks. That's four bricks that have been broken by vandals. People paid money for those bricks for their family members to be put alongside the monument. And I think the city should pay for them four bricks. It's not right that people pay money for something that somebody goes back, and we've got no security. I drive by there every, just three times a week to check the park out and make sure it's all right. The last time I drove by there, all five flags up there were torn, tattered, and faded. Especially the American flag was in shreds. I went home and got my own personal military flags and gave them to the city to hang at Marine Corps, I mean, Marine Air Force and the rest of them. And I took the flag down from my house, it's been hanging there for two years, and it's still been new, and I gave it to the city to replace the American flag. That, to me, shows no respect to the veterans. I spent 23 years of my life in the military, in the year in Vietnam, and I will do whatever I can for the veterans of this town. The way that park is maintained is not right. That monument is filthy. Nobody cleans it. Full of watermarks. So, what the VAW is gonna do, we're gonna go out there, we're gonna cap those sprinklers that are right next to the monument, we're gonna cap them. The water's going in, and it looks like crap, to be honest with you. Excuse my language, but that's the way it is. The black guy that called the street, Mrs. Mabel, she keeps an eye on the park for us. I talked to her once in a while. She goes out there and cleans the monument for us. She finally said, Mr. Marquez, I'm sorry, Jerry, I can't do it no more. Somebody else gotta clean it. I figure the city parks gotta go up and clean that monument at least once a week from the watermarks, because it looks bad.
They haven't flooded the spinkler from the last time, Mr. Marquez, they were there for the event?
No. But we talked at the last meeting, the VAW is gonna plug those sprinklers up to keep the water from that monument. They're too close to it.
Right. Especially that one?
Yeah.
That's right next to it.
So, we just said, we're gonna, we're gonna fuck it on our own, if nobody does anything about it. The city spent a lot of money on that monument, and we spent a lot of time getting that park ready, and nobody seemed to care. She also told me that those marble benches out there, they cost 600 bucks a piece. I paid 600 bucks for a bet for me and my two brothers, and somebody tipped it over. How they did it, I don't know, but they put it back, and it didn't break. That's a lot of money, 600 bucks for my pocket, man. Especially when you're on social security.
Yes, sir.
I just figured that we gotta show a little bit more respect to the veterans. I talked to the gentleman at the Texas Native Corps Station in Rockport to help me set up something around the monument to enhance the beauty of it, you know, plants, flowers, et cetera, that are native of Texas, that'll survive. And he drew me a picture, and he said, okay, okay, Jerry, here it is, here's what we made for you. It cost 600 bucks to buy the plants, and he told me that they would be willing to come here and talk to the city council, how they would help us plant flowers and shrub it around that monument and enhance the beauty of it. All they had to do was, you know, let me know, and I'll tell them. Because they did the one for Rockport.
Okay.
But that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Tracy Year. I live at 65 West Johnson Avenue. I came in regards today that I heard that you were going to do some review of the city manager. I've been at a few of the meetings. I don't come often enough, because I travel to do work. I've been a citizen of this, of this town for over 26 years now, and I've never been to a city council meeting where I've been treated, where I've seen people been treated with, like it was already previously said, eyes rolled, comments made under her breath, or she might not have thought the microphone was on, but we still heard them. Or go through the items so fast, where we asked for it to go back, and a comment would be made, and she would continue where they were going. City councils on, city managers, on average, make $81,000 a year for 10 years of experience in the, in the United States. $112,000 for 20 years' experience. In the state of Texas, I can start with a 10, with a Brownfield at 10,000 population, city manager makes $97,000. Commerce, $97,000. Dalhart, $95,000. They only have, they have a population of 88,200. Eagle Pass, $100,000, 27,000 population. El Campo, $129,000, 11,000 population. Graham, $105,000, 8,900 population. Jacksonville, $102,000, 14,000 population plus. Joshua, $98,000, population less than 6,000. Kirby, $80,000. And it goes on. I don't think I need to go any further than that. Corpus Christi, $173,000, what the city manager makes, population of 316,000. Portland, $140,000, population 18,5. Centon, $100,000, population 6,6, 6,600. Rockport, $128,000, population 10,000. Victoria, $181,000, population 65,000. So, there's a wide variety of what they make. But to most of the city councils that I've been to, and I've been to a few besides here for other places that I own, and have never seen that people be treated the way they've been treated here.
Thank you, Ms. Year. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
My name's Mary Gunn. I'm at 501 West Wheeler Ave. I've talked to Mr. Ellis about this out in town. When sometime back, probably last year, they were doing the replacement of the fire hydrants. We've got one right at the opposite corner from where I'm at, that has been probably out since y'all had the big ice storm. That was before I even moved here. They fixed and replaced the one at the park, but the one at my corner is still...
Still down?
Still down. And I believe Ms. Welburn said the one just passed that was down, because she was afraid that her, it was gonna affect her insurance with two hydrants being down. And I'm just wondering if that's, it's tagged to be fixed, but the action's not there.
It's been, what, almost a year, the last time you brought it up?
Probably so. And it's still, because they went through and they put garbage bags over a bunch of them. It had been there so long, with all the wind and everything, garbage bag was torn up, and I haven't seen anybody back to it yet. And if two hydrants are out within a couple blocks, we're done, the only working one's gonna be that one at the park. I think that's no bueno. So, if that could be looked at, that would be great, at least get one of the two working. That's all.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
My name's Sean Miller. I live at 1629 Windy Oaks Drive, Aransas Pass, Texas. I'm kinda blown away just from, just from the things that I've been seeing lately. One of the things I wanna voice is, is how someone in Ingleside, Texas, can start a website about Aransas Pass and hating on the things and the progress that we do and the things that happen here. That's, that's, that's just redundant, stupid. Someone's, people need to spend more time doing something productive. Second thing is, is, you know what? I'm not trying to call you out, but you said you don't like it when other people can compete with your business. I had a snow cone business, and you were the biggest thorn in my side ever. Well, I'm not here to argue with that. Anyway, second of all, okay, well, no, it's okay. You were really upset that I was selling snow cones, and you sold them too. But let's look, look, it's not, nor here, nor there. It's fine, nor here, nor there, nor here, nor there. Second thing I wanna say is people need to quit thriving on stagnant stuff. We are a community. We should be ashamed of ourselves, the way we act. No, I'm not gonna sit down. I'm not gonna sit down, because I live in this town. My kids went to school here. I got a lot of friends and family in this town. If y'all are worried about a town coming together and finally making progress, then shame on y'all. There's been more progress here in the last 20 years than I've ever seen, young lady. I'm just telling y'all right now, we didn't have sidewalks, we didn't have streetlights, we didn't have a lot of stuff. There's a lot of stuff this town didn't have. And, and, and I'll tell you what, a lot of the people that are sitting back saying all this stuff, I haven't seen out there volunteering when I'm out there volunteering. And it's easy just to sit back and be a keyboard warrior, but you know what? It takes something to get out in the field and help this town come together. And you know what, Don? As a person, you're the mayor. It's not the city manager's job to bring the community together. It is her job to manage the city entities. It is the mayor's job to bring this community together. And I've seen nothing but division. I don't know why you can't tell some of the people that run the websites that say, hey, y'all's town's spending and wasting money and doing this and doing that. Why don't you contact those people and say, hey, you know what? Let's stop all this. Let's stop all this and come together as a community, and do what we can do, and think outside the box, instead of pointing fingers and hemming and hawing? At what point does it get gross? When do you get tired of eating the turd taco? When, when, for her to make that money? Holy moly, that's nowhere near enough money to put up with half the crap that, that comes through here. I couldn't imagine it. I could not imagine it.
Sean, let me, let me address this to you. There's two sides to everything, that's why...
There is.
That's why you have people that vote.
No, no.
You get this, you get that. No, but listen, just be quiet, listen. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. You have a right to come here, voice your opinion. Everybody here has a right to voice their opinion. That's how this diplomacy works.
Sure.
This is not just the mayor, the city manager...
Sure, I understand.
Live by, die by it, or whatever.
Sure.
It goes by the community.
Right, and that's exactly what I'm saying, Don. I'm saying it does go by the community. But also, the community has to quit sitting back and just pointing to things that, that are the bad things. What about the good things? Look how clean our harbor is. It's beautiful down there. We have made strides. Yeah, laugh. Yeah, laugh. Laugh all you want, you know? You know what? I'm not gonna, hey, I'm just saying that this town has made strides.
They need to stop now. They need to stop now.
This town has made strides.
You need to stop.
Okay? We've had pilings. I've been down there fishing. I couldn't even cast the lines. I'd get hung up on lines down there.
If you wanna stay, listen. You can stay. But if you wanna leave it is your job to conduct this meeting. Right. It's my job to conduct this forum right here as the mayor.
That's okay. I don't mind them, I, I don't mind them hem-hawing, but the fact of the matter is, as a community, in order for us to progress forward and do good things, then we can't be divided like this. And at some point, someone's gotta raise the flag and say, "Hey, you know what? Maybe I need to quit running my, bumping my gums and get out there and, and, and help make a difference." It's hard to volunteer when you have full-time jobs. All these city councils got jobs. Everyone's got jobs. And it's hard for people to shut down and just come up here and do this. It takes something for people to pull away from their time and their families to come up here and try to make a difference. I don't give a rat's ass if everybody in here hates my guts. I'm standing for what I believe in. And if I'm wrong for that, then, then shoot, hang me, nail me to cross, talk all your smack, bump your gums. But when people don't live in the city and they have nothing to do but make a website just so people can go back and chew the fat, that's gross. That's gross. That's planting seeds of negativity that will never grow. That's all that does. You're planting, people are planting seeds of, 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 of just bad, bad stuff. And I'm just asking as a community that we come together and we see the light and we make a difference. Instead of pointing and, and, and acting like a bunch of kids in school, we're all grown adults here. I mean, come on. It ain't about, "Oh, did you see on the website how we told them?" Get outta here. Go knock on their door. Hey, I don't like that. No, this ain't comedy. This ain't comedy.
Sean.
I'm just saying.
Show the same respect for him speaking as you
No, it's, it's all right because there's a difference in small-minded and people that love stagnant turd tacos. There's people that love it all the time and they love drama. I don't love it. I don't like it. I like to put it out right when it starts. And that's the only reason I'm here. When I hear people sit up here and make false accusations about, "Oh, uh, the city manager, uh, no confidence." How about this? No confidence in the community. That's where it starts. Okay? How about that? No confidence in the community. That's where it starts. That's where it starts. All I'm saying is all the finger pointing, the name calling, the, the website, the internet warriors, all that junk, get up. You got something to say, you come and knock on someone's door and you tell them. I've seen a couple of people stand up. Okay? You know, you don't, whatever.
Sean.
Whatever.
Sean.
Hey, like I said, any of these people, I don't see them out there in the field with me volunteering. I really don't. And I've seen people in this community spend their own money and their own back and their own time to make this community better. And when people do that, they get ridiculed for it? Or they get talked smack about? People posting pictures of me, "Oh, the city manager went out to the comedy club and had a good time." What to do? This will always be the good old boy. You know why? Because we are a small town. Shame on the city manager being friends with people in the community that she manages. Shame on anyone being friends with anyone because you know what? We've all known each other a long time. We all live in a small town. If we lived in a humongous city, then that good old boy stuff would apply. You could, you say that. But you can't say that in a small town where we all know each other. "Oh, he got the job because he knows old Billy down at the council." No. No, maybe he was able to pass a drug test. Maybe he met all the requirements it took to get hired. No telling what the, what the thing could be. People say, "Oh, the city, I can't get a job down at the city." Maybe he don't have the skills. I mean, I don't, I don't get it. People are in charge of their own destination. If you ain't got nothing to do but sit around and talk mad about everybody in the city of Aransas, then come on, grow up. Grow up. Uh, no, no, I have and that's why I'm here. Because I stand up for, I believe in this. I don't chew the fat. I'm sorry. I don't like to sit back and chew the fat. Sorry. Anyway, hey, you know what? Thank you for your time. Hey, I feel bad for your job and for her job because y'all have to put up with a whole bunch of crap and I couldn't, you'd have to pay me five hundred thousand dollars to deal with it. So that little hundred and twenty thousand dollars ain't crap to manage and to bring this city as far as it's came. This city has come strides. For twenty years, this place didn't do nothing. I lived here. Nothing. The harbor's safer. The harbor's cleaner. We can take kids and our families out to eat now on Family Night. We never had a damn Family Night. We never had the policemen go out and cook hot dogs for the kids and say, "Hey, you know what? We're here for you. We wanna make you friends," instead of making y'all just think we're a bunch of jerks. Come on. What about the good things? What about the shoe drives and feeding all the people that they got money at Thanksgiving? I used to be that guy. I didn't have money at Thanksgiving. I was one of the guys that got to go get the free food because someone was smart enough to put it together. It's programs like that that make a difference. Tons of families that don't have nothing. Tons of families that can't afford to go Thanksgiving. But shame on them, right? Shame on the city of Aransas for putting something good in there for people to go out and have free Thanksgiving. Or be able to eat something. Or get a new pair of shoes because of some program where someone took the time and the energy to go out and, and say, "Hey, let's give these four kids some shoes." Quit talking bad about the policeman. Quit talking bad about the city council members. Quit driving down the mayor. Quit driving down the city manager. Let go. Let go already. Look for something nice to say. Look for something good to do. Make a difference when you wanna volunteer for shrimpery. Get your butt out there and put your work gloves on. Pull some cable, dig some ditch and do something. Don't sit back behind your little keyboard and go, "Huh huh 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 huh." Get outta here. Get outta here already. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, the floor's still open. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Chief, citizens of Aransas Pass. My name is Bill Denton. I operate a business at eight seven seven South Highway thirty-five bypass. Since we moved our business out to the bypass in 2014, we have seen countless vehicle accidents resulting in serious injuries and even some deaths at Oak Lane in the bypass and out in front of where the butter churn is. Combination of high speeds, crossing traffic and driver inattention have contributed to many of these catastrophic vehicle collisions. And once you've added rain-soaked asphalt to the mix, the potential was drastically increased. About fifteen months ago, I went to the, I went to Tech Stop and asked for help trying to get the speed limit lowered. And just on the curve, just inside the city limits, and I came up against some roadblocks with the state, but soon those roadblocks were overcome because I had the great pleasure of hosting a meeting with the mayor and the city manager and the police chief and the assistant police chief and State Representative J.M. Lozano and several other folks that were important and that all saw the, the reason that we needed to get that lowered. And with the recent annexations and the growth to AP and the forward movement and the things that have happened, the city had a little bit more leverage in order to help make this happen with the state. And I just wanted to come up here tonight and let everybody know, and for those of you that are not aware yet, that the speed limit inside the city limits on the bypass as of Friday is now sixty-five miles per hour. And the state hung those signs on Friday. Personally, I would like to thank the city manager, the mayor, the police chief, the assistant police chief and the city folks that helped make this happen. That ten miles an hour is gonna make a difference in closing rate and that ten miles an hour is gonna save some accidents. It's gonna keep our first responders safer because they're not standing on the side of the road doing things. So I just wanted to, this is not what I expected to come up and follow tonight, but I just wanted to put that out there and then remind everybody, I guess, on the heels of tonight, we did all this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Eric, on the speed limit or were given warnings or just straight tickets now?
If they were out there over the weekend giving, old people were giving a lot of warnings.
Okay, just curious. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
Good afternoon. My name is April Patterson. I live on seven five eight South Eleventh Street. And I have nothing ill to say about anybody here. I just wanted to let you know that I do see everything on social media and that's what brought me out to my first council meeting. Besides that, I'd never paid attention unless someone got elected. You know, I'm only twenty-four and you know, these things. To me, you know, I'm working. I have two kids. I don't, I know it's really ugly to say that I don't have time when I need to make time for these things, but I have two young kids and I live here in Aransas. I, we just bought our first house in May. And you know, these matters are starting to make more sense now, you know, with the water department and our taxes and, so now I'm having to pay attention to what's going on in our community. And I just wanna see it grow. I would hate to move. You know, I'm working in Corpus and my boyfriend's gonna have to find a job eventually out of town too because there's no options here. You know, I've heard for many years, I used to work down at the harbor. You know, Red Fish Willie's, I love that place. I worked down at the boat barn and I heard so many great things that it would grow, that all these pools and bars and hotels were coming and of course, investor drop out of that. But I think that's what Aransas needs, to push forward more. And I understand, you know, the shoe drive, everything like that matters. And I know everyone's on their toes tonight with everything going on, but we have to stand up and be adults too. You know, going on social media and voicing your opinion, I mean, this, we, they're all adults, guys. You know, we have to stand up and be together as well. Things need to pass. I want my kids to stay in Aransas and I know that the new schools growing up, that gives it a better future for my children as well. And I think we just need to step back and realize that we all play a part in this. And hopefully, you know, Sylvia, I have nothing to, you know, I, I really don't know everything that's going on. I had to go on that page to see what has been going on. Me and my boyfriend spent like twenty-four hours reading what has been going on the last year. And I feel like maybe the city needs to post more about what's going on. I would've never even knew when the city even has these council meetings. And I think a lot of, you know, even my friends, I don't see anybody here that is in my age group, so.
That's on our city websites, ma'am.
Oh, they are? Okay. Well, maybe I need to get on my Facebook more and hit to show what's going on. But I just wanna say thank you, Don. From what I've read and seen, I put my choice in your hands and I'm with you on your no confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Gloria Maria Blackford, fifteen oh three South McKimble Street. I just wanna, April was right on what she said. Social media has been used a lot to air out all kinds of stuff. And I just wanna say that I think the citizens need to show up more. I think the council needs to reach out to the citizens so that the citizens will come to the meetings. Nobody should fight or argue. Nobody should point the finger at anybody. You know, everybody is entitled to their opinion. I personally stand behind my mayor. I voted for him. I voted for some of you too. You know, Vicki, I voted for you. But when I can see people hurting in our community, and I could, I, I noticed a lot. I, I just barely went to work in July, back to work. And I have volunteered since I've lived here. I'm originally from the Rio Grande Valley, McKellen, to be exact. I was treasurer and president of the Aransas Pass Band Booster Club. My daughter was drum major in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And so are my nephew and nieces. My niece graduated last year as a salatorian. Here's the problem. My daughter won't come back to see me. She won't come home. My kids did grow up here. They went to school here. They were young enough. We moved here in two thousand. They're in their twenties. One just had a birthday. He's twenty-three years old. They don't wanna come back. The town's messed up too, to them. They moved to Austin. Nephews and nieces, some of them went to Cheyenne, Wyoming, be back with family. They didn't wanna be here anymore. Because they see all this garbage on the social media. My daughter sees it. She's gonna be twenty-six next year, in, in March. And she's smarter than a lot of people to, she, she's like, "There's too much crap. There's too much negativity." You know, she don't, she, she won't come home for Christmas. If I wanna see her, I gotta go to Austin. But I just wanted to voice that these concerns have been going on as a volunteer. I volunteered for shrimpery for over ten years. And I saw changes during my time of volunteering. I used to, uh, we used to run the parking lot. And I saw a lot of changes. We used to be for the kids. That's gone. Mr. Chapa, I seen you do more as a mayor in this community than I have the whole time I've lived here. You are out there. And I just wanna, I want to make people know that. I want people to know that. I want people to recognize that. You know, you, you might get mad at him or you might get upset because, "Oh, he did this or he's saying this." No, he has an opinion. Just like the rest of us do. We wanna vote a no confidence on our city manager. That's our right to do that. That's it. All our rights to do that. And nobody, nobody, nobody should get backlash from it. Y'all know my address now? I see something going on. I know why. You know, I've lived here long enough to know what goes on here. It's crazy. It's stupid. But it's happened. But I've done a lot of civic, civic stuff here in the community for, ever since I moved here. My kids are all grown. We're empty nesters. But we're still a part of Aransas Pass. We don't plan to move. We're gonna stay here. We want to see some changes. We want to see some good changes. I just wanna say that I'm with my mayor and I stand behind him and for vote for no confidence on our city manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Megan Adisbet. A couple of you guys know me. I would just like to say, since she's been here, there has been nothing but great things that has happened. We've had Thanksgiving dinners that she helps with the community and honestly, I don't think I've seen any of you guys come out and help. There's, we've had the shoe donations for children. We try to help the kids as much as we can. We've even brought up new parks. We have the Fourth of July thing that is free to everyone. We have harbor cleanups. There are roads that weren't even built that have been built now. She has honestly done so much work, but it all gets put behind because she doesn't want the spotlight. She doesn't want you to realize that she is the one who has done most of the work. And although the social media stuff is obviously very stupid, I understand they are adults. And it, it is about time to grow up. But if anything, I've, I've lived in Aransas Pass for about five, going on six years. And if anything, I love this town more than my own hometown. And I try to better it as much as I can. And as, I, I mean, I wanna try to put a museum up because I just wanna praise this place as much as I can. And that is because of her. Because she has done such amazing things for the town. And I, I love the mayor also. And together as a council and together as a mayor and a police chief and a city manager, she has done, they're an amazing team. And I would just really like to let you guys reconsider that because she's an amazing person and has done nothing but tried to better this town. This isn't even her hometown. And she's trying to clean up the harbor. She's trying to add more places for kids to play. She's trying to help those kids who are in need. She's trying to help families who are in need with the Thanksgiving dinners and trying to add more things to try to get them passed. And I just, I just hope you guys reconsider. She's an amazing city manager and if you guys lose her, I'm sorry, but it, it will be a bad day for Aransas Pass if you lose her. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else who says a comment?
I'm Grace Chapa and I live at thirteen forty-five West Greenwood. And yes, I am the mayor's wife. He didn't know I was coming and he doesn't know that I'm gonna speak. But as a previous council member, I know what it's like to be in your shoes. You are not always going to make the right decision or make everybody happy. I've been there, done that. And this community needs to get together. And you as a council, you were elected by the people. And our city manager, I've seen great things from her, but I've seen great things from all the employees, Mr. Blanchard, all the public works. It's a team. It is just not an individual person. And we owe it to everybody in this room. Let's play nice. Let's, like Sean, Megan, everybody has said, let's quit fighting. Let's get on. Let's make this city great. We are at a crossroads. Everybody goes through us. Nobody wants to stop here, especially now with all this crap going on. You know, Mr. Marquez, he fought for our right. And we give this to our veterans, you know? Our employees, they deserve, you know, I know city manager's on the executive session for evaluation. She gets a pay raise or whatever. You know, it is I believe the budget has where I think their dental and their vision might... They might not get it because of the high cost of insurance. And I understand that. But don't just give them a pat on the back. They work hard. And I know Sylvia works hard. And I've learned this later in life. As a woman, as a mom, I can do everything. I just can't do everything at once. That has been hard as a woman. I know what you go through, Sylvia. I know what it's like to be away from your daughter, your grandkid, you know? Countless times, you know, he's had to stay home. But as a mom, you know what it's like. And I feel... I know you've been alone hours. And I know all of you, you get a dollar a year. You deserve more, more than all this. And y'all deserve to give it back. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a citizen comment?
Mayor and council, my name is Cynthia Vazquez. I live at 1003 West Rhodes Avenue. I'm a resident of Aransas Pass. I'm a concerned resident of Aransas Pass. I'm so concerned that I've chosen to serve in this community. As most of you all know, I've lived here going on three years now. My husband and I chose to move to Aransas Pass after he retired from the Navy, after serving for 24 years. So first and foremost, I want to thank each and every person in this room that has served and protected my right to be able to stand up here today, to say my voice, to give my voice. As I mentioned, I've chosen to serve in this community as a religious education teacher at my church, on a board of Aransas Pass Project graduation. I volunteer with Destination Downtown Aransas Pass, which is a nonprofit organization. I volunteer with Keep Aransas Pass Beautiful, cleaning the local parks. I volunteer with City Coordinated Take Back Trash Pickups, and I serve on the Cities Planet and zoning board, and more. I've actually served in volunteer positions with the mayor, with Carrie, with Vicki, with several, with Sylvia. I bug the chief a lot and feed him tamales. So my main concern today is a city manager's position. I met Sylvia when I participated in Citizens Academy in spring 2015, then again when my family and I showed up at the Take Back Trash event in July 2015. She earned my respect on that day. She could have served in a supervisory position or not even showed up. Instead, she worked with my family side by side, picking up old mattresses, commodes, furniture, and garbage on the sides of the road. Since then, she and I have worked on different community voluntary projects together. I'm sure she's getting a little sick of me and my opinions. I have learned a lot about her in this time. She has a lot of experience and knowledge in her field. She does the best that she can every day. And Sylvia, I'm sorry to tell you, you're not perfect. Sylvia's not perfect. Neither am I. We're human. She's not always going to make the right decisions, and that's okay. I have a degree in business administration, management, and worked in the legal field as a paralegal for over 10 years with different firms, some who represented cities in the Rio Grande Valley. I can guarantee you that you will not find a replacement with Sylvia's knowledge and background. Unless you have worked in a management position of an organization such as our city, and I'm talking about limited budget, many changes, a lot of things that need to be taken care of, repairs, roads, you know, floods, all that crazy stuff, it takes a special person to be able to do that. And at this place, at this point in time, I don't think we can find somebody else. Sylvia has a passion for education. I can go back to school and get my master's degree, and the GI Bill's going to pay for it. I don't want to do it. I don't have a passion for education. She went back and did it and paid for it. She wants to go back for her doctor's degree. I could get... I could do it, too, and get it paid for. I choose not to. So unless you've worked in a management position in an organization such as our city, you cannot imagine the overwhelming responsibility and stress involved for anyone holding this position, not just Sylvia, anybody. Any person in this position will make not-so-popular decisions. They may even make a mistake. This position is being filled by a human. We aren't always going to agree with decisions that are made. However, in most cases, those decisions are made based on that person's experience, knowledge, and education. It's like being a parent. For those of you who are parents, do you always make the right decision, the popular decision? I guarantee you, when you make that decision, it's based on your knowledge, your experience, and your education. I pray that the mayor and council seriously consider the path that this is going. Ultimately, I ask that we look beyond personalities and instead focus on our goal. Our goal is to improve Aransas Pass. No one person can do that alone, not our city manager, not any of y'all, not even myself. I was asking... I am asking that we be part of the solution and not the problem. I remember that our... And remember that our citizens are watching. Our children are watching, and they're learning from our example. So once again, I pray that we can find a way, you know, as I tell my own children, look at your goal. If there's anything distracting you from heading toward that goal, then you're not heading... You're wasting time. You're wasting energy. You're wasting money. Let's try to focus on a goal, and let's try to continue going in the correct direction. And let's remember, everybody in this room and on Facebook and anywhere else, that we're all somebody's mom, we're all somebody's sister, we're all somebody's, you know, child. And let's try to treat each other with dignity. You know, we don't have to agree on certain things, but we should respect each other. You know, we're all children of God. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Going twice. Now that would close our citizen comments at 8:20. We're going to move on to executive session, section one, section 55.1071, consultation with city attorney over harbor lease, Captain Bateschak. Item B 551.071, consultation with city attorney over harbor lease, AP Seafood Packers. And item C 551.074, personnel matters, city manager evaluation. I want to thank everybody for coming out here this evening, showing up. That's good. Stay involved with your community. That's all you can do. You're the reason why we're up here. This is all belongs to you. So you live and die by the sword, Megan. So you have a safe evening. If you stay here later, hopefully it won't be that much later. We'll come back and hear what goes on. And if you're not here, hopefully you'll find out through our internet system here what happened. I ask you to have a blessed evening, and hopefully everybody has a good Christmas. If we don't see you before now and then, I want you to have a good evening. Be careful. Have a happy holidays. If you do stay here, hopefully it won't be too much longer. Anyway, have a good evening. Thank y'all.